He was caught spray painting a building. Police say this happened on Saturday when someone reported a man spray painting a building with a CD. Soon after the complaint, police were sent to the 2,900 blocks of California district in Eureka. According to police, an officer along with a sergeant found a man who was in possession of a spray paint.
The council meeting for Trinidad, California to order.
Recording in progress.
We have two counselors out this evening. Both Jack West and Katie Brackenridge will not be joining us this evening. And we do, however, still have a forum with three city council members. So we're going to proceed with the meeting and we'll start as always with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands foundation under God, indivisible, with which I pledge allegiance for all.
All right, so the first thing tonight is approval of the agenda. Are there any questions or comments in the council on tonight's agenda? All right, I have none. And any comments or questions from the public regarding tonight's agenda?
Looking now at an image sent to invite Julia Holland on time, Julia Catherine, this is your.
Hi, I think someone is off mute and I just want to make sure that you, are you trying to make your comment about the agenda? I see a hand raised as well.
No, that's.
Oh, sorry, that's the first, sorry, sorry. Okay, let's, let's go ahead and move to approve the agenda. We have a move, a movement to approve the agenda from Council Ladwick.
I'll second it.
Second from Tuttle, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so next up is the approval of the minutes from the September 12th and the October 10th meetings. So let's go ahead with the September 12th. Are there any questions from the council? Any questions about the minutes, you guys? Okay, I have none either. And how about October 10th? All right, so I'm going to go to the public. Are there any comments or corrections for the minutes from the meeting from September 12th or October 10th? Okay, bringing it back to the council. I will move to approve the minutes then from September 12th and October 10th.
I'll second that.
And second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's move on to council reports and committee assignments. So I will start with you, Mr. Ladwick.
I do not have anything to report at this time.
Okay, Mr. Tuttle, do you have anything?
Yeah, so I'm on the board of directors of the Redwood Coast Energy Authority. They are the generating source of electricity for Humboldt County. They currently provide clean energy from wind, solar, hydro, and a local biomass down in Scotia. And the local biomass plant down in Scotia invited the board members down to the plant last week and got to tour the sawmill and the power plant, which was a very interesting facility. They generate 15% of our energy from the biomass plant. And it's very interesting to see the synergistic relationship between the power plant and the sawmill because neither one could operate independently. But, but yet they do, they bring in lots of jobs to the area. Some say that the sawmill sequesters millions of tons of CO2 in the lumber production as we build houses with that material. And it really gave me an eye-opening view of that operation down in Scotia. So I'm very impressed.
Good to thank you. I just have a couple of quick ones. So one, I wanted to thank everybody that worked on the community emergency response team or CERT training. That was the weekend of November 3rd. We had great turnout. We had about 24 attendees from Trinidad. And the, we've discussed that CERT team may be reporting in quarterly. And then the swearing in ceremony will be in January for those who actually join the team. So it'll be a subset of those who attended the training. And then the city has received the title now for the 19-foot trailer that we're getting as part of our agreement to sponsor a team. So that'll be a great asset for the city. We also had a water advisory committee meeting last Wednesday, the 8th. We discussed CTR reports or the water quality reports, rainwater catchment, water rights within Leupkonholz, et cetera, a water rate study, a lot of water-related, you know, topics, of course. I'd say the most salient for the city council at this point is that the water advisory committee has asked city councils to direct them with regard to long-term planning, specifically on whether or not the water advisory committee should proceed with looking at long-term community-wide rainwater catchment, whether we should continue to look at current system investments and expansions, expansion and/or hook up to Humboldt Bay Municipal Water District. And so what's the feasibility of that? So I think we'll need to agendaize that. But the lack is asking for the city council to kind of guide them on what kind of strategic planning we should be doing for the long term. And then just this morning, Eli and I had a quick briefing with the library and museum folks and TCLT, the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust, was going to be in attendance, but they couldn't make it. But anyway, about security in that area, the community park. And I thought it was a really good, almost two-hour discussion on all facets of what they're experiencing. And then we came up, I think, with a good set of actions. And all in all, I thought, you know, it was something that we could do more broadly with different members of the community. So anyway, so that's it for me.
And I'm going to speak on behalf of Jack West. So I was at the Trails Committee meeting. So he told me if I could mention the following. Number one was Trails Committee meeting last month. He said it was a good meeting and he will brief the council at his next meeting, at our next meeting. There's also, they're currently planning another Trails Committee meeting for January. In addition to that, this coming Thursday, Jack and I are going to accompany the ladies from the state parks, I think another state parks. We're going to walk in the area that is the state parks and then try to see about possibly trying to coordinate some things that are going to be similar between our trails and Trail State Parks. And also find out, you know, as far as whatever they're making. So that'll be happening on their state.
If you'd like, you can just roll right into the staff report then at this point, right? So.
Yeah, so we do not have law enforcement present. They're in training, but if there are any questions or concerns regarding law enforcement, they ask me to pass those on. Just wanted. So I included in the packet, the city manager's report and mentioned upcoming holidays. This year, we will be closed for both Thanksgiving and Friday after Thanksgiving, the 23rd and 24th. And then Christmas Day and New Year's Day are on Mondays. So those are the two days that we would celebrate if not on the weekend this year. I mentioned in there about the city website update because it was out for a few days at the beginning of the month, but subsequently it's functioning again. And asking if any in the public would like to have some suggestions of what they would like to see on the website to let us know. I did mention about a sales tax that staff has, has reached out to the state and is waiting for a response about the, what can be done with the tax rate for residents outside the city limits. And, and I say the tax rate about the collection that the state does, how they can maybe try to help coordinate that. Rottwater storage, we had sent out 35 letters to property owners. As of this writing, we had received seven responses. Subsequently, we received another response. It's, it just basically said that they're looking into it as a company versus an individual property owner and that they would contact us. We did visit two sites, the city engineer, the geologist, myself. One of the sites seems to be quite feasible and near the water plant. And then as far as water plant operations, so Phil Godwin of Coleman Engineering, who based the CPO for the plant, he works both remotely and onsite. I said in the staffing word for approximately 88 to 90 hours per month. So subsequently meeting today, we received the bill for October and, and it's exactly 90 hours. And one of our members from the public had asked at the last meeting what the total bill was. So the one for October is actually $11,082. And certainly we're trying to bring it down as much as possible. Unfortunately, it has been coming down considerably from what it was at before. One thing that we try to do is to try to look at all factors, compare things. So strictly looking at 11,000 for 12 months, if you do look at it that way, it's 132,000. And our prior water plant operator, who was here for only six months, was getting paid between his salary and the benefits, it would have been about 126,000. So the difference is approximately 6,000. So, so we're really trying to bring in it down, but at the same time, I want to keep the quality there. We want to make sure that our employees are properly trained as we try to do the transition. Meanwhile, here I do state that Lyle is preparing to take a T3 water plant operator exam, Derek to take his T2 water plant operator exam. And that Kyle is also preparing for a T2 water plant operator exam. And John is preparing to take a D2 distribution, water distribution exam. I do mention about the racket court, which I think is a good name, once we add pickleball to the tennis court, so that this way it would be a racket court. And the state has given us a two-month extension. I'm sorry, I said two, two-year, two-year extension and not just for us. They did it straight across the board for everyone receiving the park fund money. So it gives us more time so that we can make sure we get it all done properly. Originally, they wanted it done by the end of this year. So as we know, there's only one more month other than this month. And then the board block will do the same thing. That's also going to be included towards that park screen. And then I do mention about the second annual Forest Moon Festival. So they held it last year and it was quite successful the weekend after Memorial Day. And they're doing it again this coming year, May 31st to June 2nd. They said their number showed 6,510 B's. And so anyway, I just wanted to make sure everyone's aware of that. In addition to that, I just finished a chamber meeting and our chamber is planning a New Year's Eve party, which would be here at Town Hall from 8:00 till a little after midnight. So this way they'll be putting the word out, at least initially they're talking about Rory 20C and looking into a jazz slash swing band right now. And he's got video. So I'll just introduce this. So CERT where media is out of Huntington Beach and they put together a series on Amazon Prime that just launched and it's called What It Was California Coast. And I watched it, they sent me this, the first episode. So it's a total of seven or eight episodes that they've prepared so far. And the very first episode, although it starts in Long Beach, it goes up to Crescent City and starts working down towards Trin, Atlanta, Trinidad, Eureka, Ferndale, and eventually the Lost Coast and Ensign, Sheltor Cove. So we wanted to play to you the four and a half minutes that are, that's Trinidad. So the queue was like right around the 24-minute mark. Yeah, 20. Yeah, so I, since I live in Crescent City, the front page of the Delnor Tripli had an article about the fact that it's, there's this documentary about Crescent City. And in there, they says Trinidad and so on. So I contacted Rick Sumner, who is in Huntington Beach and prepared all of this. So in the conversation, he indicated that he filmed this in 2018 because I know it hasn't been filmed since I started in 2019. So he filmed it in 2018 and, and then he's been putting the whole series together. So it's a series of eight episodes. It's available on Amazon Prime. If you just get episode one, it's 99 cents. If you get all eight episodes, it's 4.90. So I decided to let the public know and let the council.
Well, probably close captioning and saying Moonshine Beach.
Oh, and, and. Catch that.
Restaurant in Moonshine Beach.
Yeah.
So they're hearing impaired.
He said Moonstone, but.
Okay, I'll have. I already told them that subsequently Patrick's Point State Park is now Sumag State Park. And, and I also told them about the island, the new thing that they have there.
It'd be nice to have a little, you know, video like that for the website, if we had something like that, but I understand that he's doing this commercially, so.
Right.
Well, they do have a, like a, what is it called, a teaser or something like that on their website, which doesn't show Trinidad, but at least it's like about a minute and a half. And it just says about the series and that we can say that, you know, if you want to see Trinidad, check it on Amazon Prime.
And I'm going to take a pause. Are there any questions from the council on the staff report tonight? Okay, how about questions from the public regarding the staff report? Yes, please come to the podium and state your names.
I've really did a good job at the webpage. I mean, it's, it's nice. You can actually find stuff on it. And I really wanted to congratulate whoever put the work in on it. We did a good job. My, 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 my one and only kind of stupid complaint is what happened to the really pretty picture on it. It's kind of, kind of like squished off by all the information. And I'd rather have the information than the picture, but it would be nice to have a picture too and bring some way of people in.
Yeah, on the main page. Yeah, we're, we're working on that. It's, it's an interesting thing and we should, we thought we would just be able to swap out photos and their development team is working on that, but right now we have to send them to support to get them updated. So we just sent one last week. We'll see how it looks and we're going to iterate a few. So good catch because yeah, it's a little off. Thank you. Other comments about the staff report and then we'll. Yes, there is.
Thank, thank you, council members. Eli, I wanted just to thank you for letting the filmmakers know that the name of Patrick's Point has been changed to Sumag Park. And hopefully it might be a little bit too late to make those changes in the film, but it would be great if they did. So I just wanted to say thank you for alerting that to their attention.
Sure, you're welcome.
Any comments or questions about the staff report? All right, in that case, this is good then to just move on then to the items from the floor while we're asking for feedback. So at this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on tonight's agenda. We will generally limit comments to about three minutes or less. Are there any items from the floor? Right, I see nothing tonight, so we're going to go ahead and move on to the consent, tonight's consent agenda. Are there any questions from the council or comments on the consent agenda? All right, I don't see any. I have none. Members of the public, any comments on the consent agenda? I see none, so bringing it back to the council for a motion.
Move to approve the consent agenda. Second it.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. But let's move on into tonight's action and discussion agenda items. The first one will be the selection of a new mayor pro temp to serve the remaining one year term. I don't know, Steve, if you wanted to say anything?
Yeah, I just wanted to say really that I'm not doing the job, the justice that is needed to, to really put in the time. I have a new job that started July 1 and I felt that I'm just missing too much during the day and in the evenings as well. So I just wanted to, and I also thought this would be an opportunity to at least open the discussion now, obviously without Katie and Jack West here. You know, this is something just to think about, but it also dawned on me that having someone take the mayor pro temp position as sort of a preparation for being mayor might be a way to look at it. Other boards that I've served on, there's been sort of a chance to get used to the role by being, you know, the, the, whatever, the next in line. And I thought maybe to reframe it like that. But anyway, I'm asking the council to, to build that position.
And I will just mention that I had a sidebar discussion with Council Brackenridge, who unfortunately was not able to make it tonight for, for personal reasons, but she at this time does not feel that she would not want to put her hat in the ring, so just be put that position. So I guess with that, not to put you on the spot, Counselor Tuttle, but are you interested at all in becoming mayor pro temp?
I'm not interested.
Okay, all right. Fair, fair enough. In that case, I would nominate Jack West to be, that sounds like a terrible.
There should be an expert in communication.
I should, I should point out that we have had a communication with Counselor West and he was willing to do it, but I did want to offer to the two new counselors first because they've not had a chance to be in that role. So, but for neither of them, it's, you know, seems like it's not at the best time. So I would, actually, before I, we do any nominations, pardon me, I do want to go to public comment first. So are there any public comments about the role of mayor pro temp? All right, thank you. I just want to make sure I didn't skip that step. And in that case.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, so I noted Counselor West and Counselor Ladwick have seconded it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Jack.
Congratulations, Jack, if you're on your call. Or within hearing distance. All right, so the next discussion item is regarding LAFCO deposit request for the North County Fire Special Study, the initial planning and scoping phase. And I believe Eli is going to be a SMF.
Okay, sure. So I put in here in the analysis that the city of Trinidad, working along with the county service area board and the Trinidad and Manchuria have all been requested to provide 5,000 each to initiate a special study, plan and scope for what would be called, tentatively, the North County Fire District. Some Measure Z funds are being used, paying one of the, one of the persons who's working on this. And future funding could possibly include some more Measure Z funds since when they did a fire district in South County, they did use some Measure Z funds. So we'll see if that would be available. The study will likely lead to hiring a consultant for, through LAFCO that specializes in the creation of fire districts. And the fire district could cover the area from Arcana to Orang. And the lack of volunteers in the area between Trinidad and West Haven and so on, and retirements have contributed to the necessity of addressing fire protection needs in North County and personnel. The role of CAL FIRE will be addressed as well in assessing local fire services and resources as to what role CAL FIRE will have. So further details are in the attachment, which is a one page from LAFCO. It basically spells out the scope that would be into. So any, so we have had like a few of us, myself and Steve Ladwick, have been meeting with the county and just trying to assess. just trying to assess the, and also our fire department. It's been meeting also, uh, to figure out exactly how this whole big picture would evolve. So I don't know, Stephen, to add.
Yeah, I think this is money well spent. I was gonna mention that I've been in some of these meetings with the county, with CAL FIRE, um, with Northern Humboldt Fire District, uh, chief and so on. And this is a national occurrence where, uh, smaller volunteer fire departments are having a hard time staying afloat. And so, um, there are some models out there that, um, have brought to our attention. Mr. Hickenin has brought, uh, some just ways of organizing this from, from down, uh, Southern District. Uh, I think there are some creative ideas out there, but we, we definitely present, uh, unique set of challenges, how spread out we are, um, and so on and so forth. So I think this is money well spent. To research, to find the right way to organize, to fund, the big question of course is how to fund a fire department, um, how to maintain adequate fire service. We have been so, I just agree to him. We have just been so fortunate with our volunteer fire department, uh, for the, the years that we've had. And West Haven, this is a similar situation, so, uh, about trying to keep their fire, um, the number of staff, uh, up to what it needs to be. And so this is just the right time to have this discussion.
And I noticed when I went to the post office last week, uh, right as soon as I was entering, that there was assigned West Haven volunteers for their fire districts, so. Uh, so, you know, I was thinking, you know, gee, we should have had a Trinidad one there instead. Don't bunch on our territory because we got limited resources.
Um, I don't have any questions about this. It seems like money well spent to me as well. I mean, we need to have, uh, I think having kind of a shared services model across the northern part of California makes sense, so. Um, but I wanna, uh, oh, did you have a question? I wanna go then to the public, if there are any questions or comments that this proposal. Um, I have, uh, one person coming to the podium and then Ms. Provo will come back to online.
Let's hear it again. Uh, I was just curious, I didn't fully understand about the payments. Okay, I understand the city chivalry in five thousand. I understand, was it CAL FIRE chivalry in five thousand? The Rancher Chivalry in five thousand. I'm not entirely sure what the CSA four is and, uh, what it consists of and who, who we pay for and how, how that part of it we get paid for.
Yeah, that's the CSA four is the County Service Area Board, uh, which covers West Haven and the, uh, other areas through the county. The county has this special district, uh, that was created. Uh, so I'm not sure of the exact boundaries of it, but I, I do know that West Haven is part of it. And, uh, I'm sure if it goes, cause the Oryx does have a volunteer fire department, so it might go up to Oryx. From, so it would start basically, uh, from, uh, Arcana and McKinleyville, cause McKinleyville and Arcana have their own fire. So it would cover the area north of McKinleyville, uh, all the way up to Oryx. CSA four.
And again, this, this sort of stems from, if you have one entity that's responsible, like in this case, the county is responsible for this very large area, uh, it's, it's just harder on one agency, so they're, they're, we're moving towards more of a multi-agency approach to keeping the fire services in check.
Ms. Provo, I believe you have your hand raised?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yes, I do have a couple of questions. One, um, have you contacted the volunteer fire departments, such as Oryx Volunteer Fire Departments, about this initiative? Um, second. Second, um, I want to remind the city council that, um, uh, Trinidad, Oryx, West Haven areas are within the Yurok Aboriginal Territory. And why I bring this to your attention is that Oryx Volunteer Fire Department is essential to the Yurok Tribe. They are the first responders that go over Bald Hills Road and it, um, help with many fires that happen over and on the Bald Hills area. We would love to be a part of this conversation of how do we, um, work together to be able to provide a more responsive, um, collaborative fire district in the areas that support Yurok Aboriginal Territories. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm told that Oryx is also involved in this, but the important thing is, uh, the county being in LAFCO. So, uh, both representatives from the county and from LAFCO are spearheading this effort. And, uh, you know, between you requesting it and then we can mention to them that, uh, the Yurok Tribe would also be interested.
Would it be possible to send the contact information to Ms. Provo? So that she, unless it's already in here?
Yeah, I was looking with, uh, let's see.
Oh, is it the LAFCO?
Yeah, LAFCO, it does give contact, LAFCO staff at four, four, five, seventy-five, oh, eight.
Okay.
So that's one, which is Colette, and then Sibyl is from the county staff.
Okay.
Yeah, I, um, Ms. Provo, I would recommend starting with Sibel Emmett. Um, and we can get you her contact information. She's been given the unfortunate task of trying to bring all these folks together. Um, and it's not an easy deal, uh, but we should, uh, we can definitely contact you and, uh, put the two of you in, in contact with each other.
Uh, thank you very much. That would be appreciated. Like I said, you know, um, unfortunately, we've had lots of fires, um, upriver and, um, you know, they, they, uh, with this severe climate change situation, we have to be proactive in doing some mitigation and preparing for fire emergencies, so we would very much like to be a part of this conversation.
Thank you. All right, thanks, everyone. Oh, so one more, uh, public comment?
Hi, buddy, Aaron Hakenin. Uh, just wanted to say thank you for having this discussion. This is a very challenging topic. For a lot of people, because there's a lot of time and motion and, uh, tradition invested in various fire agencies that may or may not make it through the formation of the district. Uh, the fire agency that I got my start with was volunteer back in nineteen ninety-five, just, uh, turned over the keys, if you will, to the contracted agency to do it. So it's a long time coming and it's, it's been a slow iteration of the process. Um, just looking at the scope on this LAFCO deposit, it talks about, uh, a study to develop an increased understanding of potential strategies for providing the best fire and rescue services to residents and visitors of CSA four, which includes West Haven, City of Trinidad and the Trinidad Ranch area. And then super important to, uh, to Sheri's point, identify potential impacts of service modifications on Oryx volunteer fire departments in North and Arcana Fire Protection. So that speaks to that this doesn't exist in Ireland, we don't exist in Ireland. Um, we've, we've got to think about the impact on our neighbors and invite them to the conversation. I think it's a great idea, perhaps there's, is that he can look to see if there's any benefit to including Oryx as a potential piece or an additional piece to, for this new fire district, which is what's gonna happen. But thank you, this is gonna be difficult, uh, this isn't gonna be easy, uh, it's not gonna be inexpensive, but we have to do it. Uh, it's just, uh, like, Steve sets the direction, so thanks.
Thank you.
Right, I just do want to mention that, uh, you know, we really appreciate, uh, from the city level, you know, having Erin present in our city, uh, because she is a professional firefighter in Marin County. And yet, he lives here and he helps out our fire department. And he's attended, uh, these meetings as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Erin. All right, I'm gonna bring it back to the council then, um, or, uh, I think you need an approval from us to move ahead, so I guess I would, uh, move to approve the, uh, request for the North County Fire Special Study uh, and the investment from the city of five thousand dollars for that study.
Second that?
All right, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so the next item is a discussion of a citywide, uh, survey that the, we would like to, uh, conduct. The, um, you know, I was meant to put a paragraph in here, but the net net is that we are, uh, looking to iterate on kind of the questions and let the council review them and then conduct the survey sometime at the beginning of, uh, twenty twenty-four. And Eli, I don't know if you have anything you want to add before we go into this discussion or Jennifer?
Yeah, I, you know, I'll just start off, uh, you know, add to what you're saying. Uh, so first of all, I, I do want to give credit to, uh, number one, this sort of started with the STR, and I need, and Jennifer has taken it on. And then Cheryl's also wanted to do a city survey. So the combination of the two, so I really want to give credit for both, uh, Jennifer and Cheryl, cause they've been working on putting this together. And they wanted to bring it forward here, so, uh, we could see what it would look like and then offer any kind of input as to the format. Want to make sure that it's a survey that's well accepted by the community by getting as good of a participation as possible. Anyone on, uh, the, uh, council or from public has some good constructive ideas of, uh, what would work better? Please let us know.
Yeah, so exactly. So thank you for mentioning the STR survey, because, yeah, they really started it. And, and between the two of us, we did it with quite a number of questions, so I kind of shortened it up last week, too. About twenty questions, so we're gonna need to have them review it as well, of course. I wish that would happen on the last topic. It would have been perfect timing.
It was, it was just a little bit, uh.
Yeah, you could even look on the timing, but it's still a nice touch.
Hopefully, it's not.
Yeah, hopefully it's a serious exam.
Yeah.
So I, Jennifer, I want to, uh, say maybe? Okay. The product speaks for itself.
Yes, yes, thank you for, for getting this into the tool. And I should say, we're using Survey Monkey, which will be really great, because in the past, we've done manual surveys. Using Survey Monkey, people can enter online or they can enter manually, they can use a QR code, which should, or set up, so people can access the survey. And so I don't, I don't want to go through the whole thing. I think it kind of speaks for itself. So I'll just ask, I guess, if anybody's had a chance to review it or if you have any questions or concerns with the council.
Where can we go check out this?
It's in the pack.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And, uh, you can also reach out to Jennifer or I if you want to do it online, so. And, uh, let me then, I see no questions from the council, so let me go to the, uh, public. Any questions or comments about this, uh, idea of a community survey? All right, I don't see anything, so, um, are we asking for approval to proceed, Eli, with this then?
Yeah, yeah, I, I think that that would be good, at, at least some direction.
Okay.
Uh, you know, in other words, uh, you know, number one, yes, proceed with a, a survey. And number two, uh, you know, possibly proceed with the way it appears now.
I think the timing, because, uh, I was thinking after the holidays, so more like the beginning of twenty twenty-four. Does that make sense to you? Okay. The, um, I think we're back with the council, so does anyone want to approve it or you want me to? I mean, I could kick this off if you'd like.
Yeah, why don't you? Just to word it the way you want it.
Okay, so, uh, I would move to approve, uh, a community survey that consists of general community questions and STR, short-term rental, uh, specific questions, uh, to be executed in the beginning, uh, of January, or be, excuse me, beginning of twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that.
Okay, all of us in favor? Aye. Aye. All right, thanks again, Jennifer, for all your help and Eli. All right, so the next thing is the public, the next agenda item is the public outreach and awareness proposal. And so I am gonna turn this over to staff for me to kick that off.
Yeah, um, so we had this on the agenda, uh, at, well, the last meeting, uh, we, uh, actually had Colin Vance present and, uh, walk through the proposal, uh, which, um, there, there was basically a question of, you know, can we see something in writing? So, uh, we have provided the latest version and, uh, told by Gabe that, uh, Colin, after he had seen it online, uh, provided even more updated version, which I gave, presented. So I'll turn it over to Gabe, because basically, between Gabe and Anton, they've, uh, you know, received the most information uh, in dealing with, uh, with this issue.
Um, I don't have too much to add. I know Councilmember Breckenridge was really involved in this hands-on at the beginning. And, um, I, I don't know if we wanna look at this as a, as a whole council, or if this is something we're ready, you guys are prepared to either move off the docket or keep us pursued. But at the last meeting, we brought up, like you, you mentioned that you wanted to see the proposal. So the proposal was actually the September packet, but I didn't include it in October for some reason. So included in this packet is the proposal. I think the, the main, the main things we wanted to focus on, if I'm not mistaken, is, is the topics that we could, the city could use to to fill the double, right? So, uh, I, I think beach etiquette, parking, trails, dogs, speed was another one that was brought up, uh, cultural resource mindfulness, uh, even some of the public safety things, Steve Cliffs, sneaker waves in the off-season during the heavy wave season, um, dog etiquette, etiquette, aggressive dog behavior. Those were some of the topics that, that we brainstormed with Colin Vance. And that's where, that's pretty much where we're at right now. We just wanted to get an idea if this is something that the council keep kicking, kicking one month in advance. We don't have to make any decisions right away. This was just something that we obviously discussed in response to some things that were happening in town. And we don't really have a, a real large video voice. I mean, our, our, our email list is limited, our, you know, we can direct mail people while we want through town. We have that resource, we just don't have a bigger voice to get it out to the people. I mean, obviously, people who live in Trinidad almost know that, a lot more people visit Trinidad and with. So, you know, this is, this is just one media option that we have to, to pursue. And if we had a list of topics, uh, does the council, would the council like us to keep, keep building on this, keep, or working with this, or maybe come back with more information? If, and there's no rush, there's absolutely no rush for this. It could be a seasonal, it could be, um, you know, we can, six months is, I think, what was that the proposal, like a six-month, uh, run, uh, several days a week? Uh, we can pick the times, we can pick it during baseball season, we can, we can really focus, you know, when these messages are being told, so in, in customs.
I'm just gonna add a footnote that, uh, Colin did mention that, uh, we don't necessarily have to call six months that period, and we could break it up by a couple of months. Yeah.
So we have talked about it two or three times, so I, I did ask for it to be on the agenda, because I thought that since Gabe had done the due diligence, that we should at least bring it for the council and the council should say yes or no. It's, if it's not something we're interested in right now, it doesn't mean we wouldn't be interested down the road. But also, I thought, you know, it would be good for staff to get some guidance one way or the other, so. Um, and I, I just have a quick question, Gabe, is like, what about, um, kind of staff time? Is this, is this something that if we executed this, would it take up a lot of staff time or what's your view of that?
My take is that we as staff deliver the content that we want to AK. As we heard from their, the pilot they did, they did for us, which we can always play that again tonight if you wanted to hear that Trinidad opening pilot that they created. Um, they're, they get the job done. They have creative team that can really use to this stuff. So I think if we give them the content, they do a lot of the heavy lifting.
They would take it.
Um, you know, I, what kind of response comes from the public, how we receive that in the office? Is there criticism? Is there, you know, why are you guys doing this? I mean, hopefully that's not the case, because the messages that the city would support, the messages that the city would front would be very public service, uh, I'm sorry, public service oriented, not necessarily like, hey, come to Trinidad and go shopping. And that's for the chamber. You know, our messages are really things that this council wants the public to know about Trinidad. We've got a problem with speeding. If we want people, we want to cultivate a culture of people driving a little slower in Trinidad, get that message out to the world, to, to the local listening, audience through this meeting. As far as staff time, again, I think that if the council wants it bad enough, if, if the city believes that there are issues that need to be dealt with, we'll find, we'll find the staff time to do it. And these folks are, I believe, are pretty good partners. And the question is, of course, you know, is radio the right thing? You're going to get our most bang for the buck. That's a, that's a discussion that I think we have.
We asked that other councils.
Well, I'm going to, uh, so my, my recollection is, um, you know, they do, like for the sponsor, sponsorship, reaching out to the businesses, they do that. So we don't have to do that. So that's another, I think, a very useful tool in this. Um, I think that I was going to say or suggest even before you said it, that, you know, you basically folks working in the front office have the best sense of what's going. I would ask that, that I think is a great idea. I would ask that in the staff report, the, for the each of the meetings, that we simply have, this is what's, this is what the PSA was for this month. This month was dogs. This month was, was, you know, beach safety, whatever. Just so that everybody keeps track of it. I don't currently listen to these radio stations, but I listen to radio. So I'll, I can easily add this to my, my search kind of thing. Uh, and I think, you know, doing nothing, you're guaranteed that that's going to change. You do something, maybe something will change. So I think for the, for the cost, I think it's a pretty good return on the investment.
Could we, uh, put the audio on our website? So every month?
Yeah.
Could we email the audio to people that want to be informed?
I think so, yeah. It'll be the MP three. Yeah, it came through pretty smoothly. Yeah.
Or, I mean, not, that's a great idea, but we could also just email the whole group saying, don't forget to go to our website and click on the link for the latest message to get people more used to the website.
Yeah, I would definitely do that. I agree. Yeah. And I think, you know, we talked about last time about doing, you know, it helping to drive traffic to the website and kind of that cooperative, collaborative approach. And I like the idea of bringing in the businesses as well. I'm not a big radio person at all. So I'm not the best judge of that, but I like the idea of trying something new to Steve's point and, you know, getting the, the message out and, and seeing if it helps.
And if we do see something like this, I would love to take something like this to Bosco's Communications as well. Might be another, another worthwhile investment. I know I'm old school with radio, but my truck doesn't run without it. So it's just, it's, there are, I think there are enough people that we're going to have, you know, website, radio, mailing. All right. This is covered.
Let me, um, it sounds like the council is, uh, had their questions answered. So let me go to the public and see if there are any questions about this proposal or comments. Must have to be questions. Sir Hagan?
Um, hi. I just had, yeah, I listen to radio as well. I listen to a lot of these stations. Um, I think it's great that we're trying something, but my concern is that for the investments, we're reaching a very narrow spectrum of radio listeners and we have to get people timed just right to hear it. Uh, visitors coming to town that don't know about our issues, the local community feels getting better about things like the dog issues and those types of stuff. I guess my question is, radio stations that I listen to, most of the time they have public service announcements. And usually those are free of charge or at a very reduced cost. Is that something we'd explore? Because then that could go to every radio station in the county, because we have a lot of radio stations up here. And then it would make more sense to hire somebody to create a flashy soundbite that you could dole out as public service announcements. To try and get more people to take them out of all that.
Thank you. Other questions or comments? All right. I'm going to bring it back to the council. I guess one of my thoughts before, from a marketing perspective, was would we, you know, be, like, there's no such thing as billboards anymore. Because like ideally, you, you used to reach people in place with things like billboards or, you know, and I'm glad there are billboards, by the way. Not a
Going with this.
You know.
Yeah.
Um, no, I don't, I don't like billboards, but, um, so you used to do stuff like that. Um, and then friendly, you know, a lot of people don't read the, the newspapers. Um, so they go online. So, um,
Well, and I think what you're getting at is, you know, the geo-fencing that social media has.
Yeah.
If you show up on a zip code, bam, your social media is loaded with Trinidad-specific. But that cost, you got to pay for that. You got to pay to geo-fence your one square mile. I would offer maybe a little bit bigger fence. But, um, basically when your phone recognizes you're within a certain range, your social media is loaded up with, with advertisements that you pick. Again, who are we reaching? You know, that's going to, that's going to reach the folks that do social media. I don't know the cost of that. I don't think it's in, inexpensive. Um, but it is another way to reach people as they, you know, the, the out of town, right? We're, we're assuming that folks coming over from Sacramento are going to hit the search button on the radio to find local radio. You know, there's a few people that do that. Um, I don't know.
Did they give us the, uh, listener, um, number of listeners? I think I asked him last, last time and he, not sure if he.
He had some age demographic?
Yeah.
Information, but he didn't give us like the number.
Terms of listeners.
And I, I remember asking him, could you, you know, do you know who's listening from out of the area? He said, we don't have a way to, to track.
So, yeah.
They can do, they can tell who's listening in the area by surveys and such and who's, who's responding to local ads and things like that.
Yeah. Yeah. All right. Well, how are we, uh, how are we thinking about this right now, you guys?
I think what, what Gabe was asking for, if I'm not mistaken, is that he's looking to for us to either say, keep going or put it on the, on the back burner. And I would urge us to, to keep going on this and to move forward. I don't know if you need that. Is this a motion? I'd look at the, the way this is set up. Are you, is this a motion or is it directing staff kind of discussion?
I like, I like the direct staff.
Yeah.
I mean, the motion doesn't necess, I, if you're going to approve, if you want us to really like drive this, um, since there's a budget number attached to it,
Yeah.
uh, it would be good to have a specific motion.
Yeah.
But, um, you know, we're, we're kind of, we're in the wake of some of those issues that we had. You know, I noticed that they call it the dust settling. It does settling. Doesn't mean we have to be complacent. You know, it's a nice opportunity to, 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 to maybe craft our media message outlets, whatever they may be. And this could be something that the council could, if, if you weren't ready to just say, okay, well, it's time to do it now. Let's get it going before the holidays, you know? Maybe, maybe just say, hey, you support this in concept and you like this as an algorithm, as a, as something for the staff to keep pursuing. And, um, we can have it ready to pull the trigger on when we're ready with a fully developed concept and message, uh, that suits whatever that time period is. Right now, do we want to start going after the dogs off leash? I don't know. Do we want to start with the, you know, slowing traffic coming?
And I would say those two, I was thinking about this, those two is more of an April, May, June kind of thing. It's the, as the traffic in town literally increases both driving and people and dogs and whatnot. So, but in the meantime, you know, safety around the, around our beaches, you know, this is when a lot of folks come up here and get involved into that, you know, let's walk on the beach. Maybe that's a good place to start or just, you know, spend the holidays in Trinidad. I don't know. Uh, but creating a, a welcoming environment. I know that business owners have mentioned, you know, the shoulder seasons. It's hard to, to generate a lot of, of, you know, business in the, the off-season, if you will. So maybe, maybe that would be an incentive to reach out, start reaching out to the businesses, but in essence, that's a separate thing because they pay for their, their, their spots. So maybe we direct staff to have something ready to go by March or April. Um, once we get into the busy season and start with the, the speed and the increased usage of Trinidad, the trails, trail safety and that kind of thing. Maybe that's what we do.
I think we can negotiate some of these terms that the rails that they've set for us are like hoping, you know, six thousand dollars will get you X amount of months for six months. But then he also said, you know, it's, it's based on a number of messages over a period of time. So I think we can extend that a little bit. And when we kick it off, doesn't necessarily have to be like December first, and then the clock starts ticking and you're running out of time in line. So what I like, I mean, honestly, what I'd like to hear and what I'm hearing you say, um, Steve, is that that you support this out, uh, this, uh, this project.
Expenditure.
As expenditure and you believe that it has some value and we can queue something up, um, based on the council's support for the staff to keep developing. I just don't, if, if, if it looks like the, the council, like majority was like, hey, you know what? We're not really open to it. You know, then I get that, we get the message. So I think just hearing from the council, whether it's the three of you down in the room, that this, keep going with this. We can come back with a developed proposal, uh, in terms of like sounding the soundbite.
Yeah.
We can throw them out to you before they get to air.
I think the other thing, so, so I'm not quite ready to go forward. I think I just have a hesitation. I think my hesitation is that I personally haven't taken the time to go listen to some of these stations. And for that I apologize because I'd like to get a better sense, a little bit better sense of kind of how, you know, how they position things. And, and so I need to feel like I, I feel like I need to do a little due diligence. But the other thing is the chamber. So I didn't know if the chamber knew about this. And if they, like, like last time we discussed this, there was a, a member of the business community who said we need to develop sort of a tagline or, you know, I know, I know other people have suggested that too. Like Trinidad doesn't have a kind of a brand, if you will. And it's nice if you go out and do this kind of thing to have your, your message, your brand, like who are we, you know? Some people have those, you know, we're a drinking village with a fishing problem. You know, we, we don't want that necessarily. It's been done to death, but you know, it's like, what is our, kind of our, our?
I think the chamber would be the best place to start with.
Exactly.
You know, come up with a, uh, right? Branches pass, hits the climate.
Yes, exactly. We, I feel like we need that kind of that, you know, and
But it's something about Trinidad, you know, come for the whatever, leave for the whatever.
Come for the views, come for the people, you know.
Get your crab on in Trinidad.
Be crabbing.
Yeah. So, so in fact, we could add to the community survey a question about, you know, get creative.
Yeah.
What would your tagline be for the city of Trinidad? And then we can vote on them as a city council or something. But I think we need, kind of need that to tie it all together. And then we could use it on the website. We could use it and, and then determine whether these are the right radio stations. I mean, I'm not anti-radio, but I just, I'm just not sure. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I love the idea. I love the idea of doing something creative, but I'm not, I'm not quite there yet, but but close. I don't know.
Yeah, I feel this very same way, saying I'm not really sure on, um, radio as the media, but I, I love the idea.
Yeah. Yeah. So so maybe, I mean, I don't want to get us stuck here, but, um, maybe if we could reach out to the chamber, I mean, I know you're on the board. Maybe we can talk to them a little bit about this. And then I, if you guys agree, I'll add a question to the
Yeah.
survey about it and see if we can get some creative juices flowing in the public. And maybe we'll get something back that we all just say, that's it. That's the one. And is that helpful?
Yeah, it is.
Okay.
Need a motion or anything else?
You got that.
Okay. All right. Um, the next, uh, item then is a decision discussion about the December meeting schedule. So I think the question is basically whether we have a December meeting or not. Uh, there are a number of us who are, uh, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Provost, did you have a, a question or comment?
I, I did. Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just back on the last, um, topic. Um, I think that there's an opportunity to involve our Trinidad Elementary School. Eighth grade would be a wonderful opportunity for students to say, um, you know, message from students around dog, um, leash laws or about litter on our beaches or about driving safe because we're a small community and there's a small Trinidad school. Um, so I was wondering if the radio stations would consider this a learning opportunity for young students to be in the media field and if they would give us a cost break if we involved school in learning opportunity to be on the radio, uh, students on the radio. So that's one thought. The other thought was that I know that besides the chamber, possibly the Trinidad Coastal Land Trust might be interested in having a voice at the radio because we have lots of areas of access to beaches and some, um, areas that we want to make sure that, um, uh, residents and guests, um, access those beaches in a safe, um, way. So I think that there's opportunity to look at, uh, this in a broader sense for, uh, for the council. So thank you for letting me have that opportunity to speak.
Thank you. All right. I, um, uh, back to the December meeting. So I think the issue is availability uh, for, uh, several of us. And we did not, as we reviewed agenda items, future agenda items, we didn't see, uh, a, a huge number of urgent issues. And if we did have some things that needed to go through, we could do, do it via consent agenda. But anyway, I wanted to see from the council if there were any conservative questions about skipping the December meeting. Okay?
No, I, I was one of the, the folks who's out the second Tuesday of the month. Yes, you can, it's okay with me.
Yeah. And I think we've, yeah, we've had a lot of folks that have been, uh, down unfortunately this, uh, season with.
And I know in past years, you know, we've done the, the 24-hour emergency notice for, you know, some grant application or something like that. So as long as we don't put a real big, uh, big ticket item on with no notice, we could just go.
Right. Uh, any, uh, concerns or questions from the public about, uh, skipping the December meeting? All right. So I will bring it back to the council. I don't think we make a motion on this. We just, right? We just agree that, yeah. So we've just agreed then that we, we will not be having the December meeting, will be resuming in January. And Aaron, are you guys having a planning commission? So the planning commission is also, uh, skipping the December meeting. So I think that's consistent across the board then. All right. Any, uh, speaking of future agenda items then, any future agenda items anyone wants to T F? I, I don't have anything top of mind that we have assessed in the past, other than I guess at some point we do want the water advisors, we have requested a discussion about long-term planning. Okay. All right. Uh, in that case, we may have just set a record in sixty-five minutes and, uh, meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Happy holidays.